Everybody. And she wants to, she wants to give the talk on the flag. Dana, would you lead us in a pledge film? Please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you, you have a, an agenda. And I have no additions to the agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can you hear us, Bo? Okay. Are there any recognitions tonight? We'll go forward.
Um, just two for me. Uh, one, this is a little bit different, but usually the cleaning schedule goes a little different. But so I'm going to get ahead of the game, but I got to watch our custodians firsthand, kind of doing the deep cleaning of the middle school. Um, since we were still working last week and they were working really hard at it. So I appreciate all that the custodians are doing to clean all the buildings around the district. And then I would also give a shout out to Nikki Bloom and Candace Watt. Uh, last week they did a, a training, uh, WDEs kind of piloting this youth mental first aid. Um, that they're just trying to get ahead of things and all the things that our kids go through and just trying to build up some expertise. Uh, with our counselors and then part of their job is going to be then to give that expertise to, to the staff in a strategic way. So just appreciate them, uh, signing up. I think it was the very first session that WDE offered and those two jumped at it and they're, are leading the way. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other recognitions? Yes.
You just pushed it back.
Oh, gotcha. I don't know if Billy was going to do it, but we have a published author from our school. Um, Presley Fitzwater did, had an article in the Wyoming livestock roundup. Thought that was cool.
Congratulations. Jason?
In last meeting, I don't know if we mentioned Deb Sweet. Twenty-three years as youth service. Nearly 300 kids that came through her door or our door here. So, um, like I said, 23 years, 300 kids, so.
Thank you, Jason. Any other recognitions? Seeing none. We'll go with the Western County Health Services. I don't know. Yes, you have to. Please.
Do I have to, do I have to hold it the whole time? Okay. Well, first up, I want to say thank you guys for letting us get on the agenda relatively short notice. Um, most everybody in here looks familiar, but I'm Mike Evanson. I'm one of the physical therapists at the hospital and the department manager. And then I've got, I'm going to try to not mess up the last names because you guys got relatively new ones. Mickey Crabtree, Athena Lunas, Lewis, and Carrie King are here too. Did you guys all get the, the letters in the email? So we sent out some information ahead of time to talk about.
Yes, we did.
A few items. So the, the PT and OT contracts with the school and then also kind of an associated topic is like a PT OT adaptive PE room. I guess if you guys have, have that information in front of you, I guess. If you guys have any questions regarding that, I don't know if you guys need me to kind of go through that information again. But.
Jason?
So are you, um, I know. Um, as far as the, the room, um, do you guys require a certain amount of square feet or anything like that?
You know, get very distracted in my classroom. That's one of the main ish reasons why we see them. Um, so just kind of having our own space. Just kind of decreases that chance of them getting distracted, even if we're in another sped teacher's room. Cause then we have like a swing and a treadmill and an elliptical and all these big items that we use for exercise. Between the three other people that share this room with us. Um, and a trampoline that we throw medicine ball that and it just can get very loud. Um, and you know, little kindergartners when they're swinging, they're yelling and whooping and hollering and enjoying their time. Um, so our biggest concern here is we don't want to take away from another sped teacher with their own caseload. Trying to do math and reading and writing services. Whereas, you know, every kid gets a little jealous, you know, if someone's doing something really fun and they're at the table having to work, you know. Their attention goes to that kid that's getting to play and getting to do these fun things. Whereas then they're going to ask their teacher, hey, can I go do that? Or I want to do that. And they're either going to shut down or they're going to get to do that activity. But then maybe they won't transition back to get their own specific stuff done. It's just kind of a, one of our concerns that we want to be successful for the students. Rather than have to be quiet and worry about, we don't want to disrupt the hallway, another teacher's classroom, another sped teacher classroom. But that way we allow every kid to get the most out of what their service time.
Do we have any available space that could accommodate something like that?
What's that? Oh, it's good. Um, so we officially have no extra rooms at the elementary. We've outgrown the building again, um, with the addition of, you know, the two sped teachers from when the building was built. Um, but we do have two areas available for them to use in two of the bedrooms and have worked it out with those teachers. So it shouldn't be an issue.
My, my question is, in, in reading the, the letters that I received, basically it was on, on funding. More so you were asking us to increase or we're asking for an increase on the, on the contract. There, there's two, two scenarios which go through my mind. Number one, if, if we write the contract for $60,000 and I'm just using that, that number. And we only use $40,000 worth of services. We've overpaid from our budget, $20,000 basically because of the contract. And vice versa. If we contract for $40,000 and you offer $60,000 worth of services. You've lost out on the $20,000. So is there a way that, that we can contract, say for the $40,000? And have that contract read if, if we go over that. Uh, we pay on an hourly basis or whatever the normal charge would be.
So I know for a couple of other school districts that we do, we do do an hourly rate. Um, and we don't have like a $41,000 budget or anything. So that's, that could be an option. We just didn't know if that would be open here. Cause I mean, then that doesn't give us a cap or, you know, a maximum or a minimum or anything like that.
Right.
Well, I, I know we would be open to that. It's just kind of, we don't know where we would end up on that spectrum.
Well, and, and I don't think we know all the time either because of students coming into the district or leaving the district. And so therefore we, we don't know that either for sure. I mean, there's no, I, I guess you can't come up with a perfect finite number. And, and the last thing we want to do is have you guys lose $20,000. But also on our side of it, we don't want to give out $20,000 in my case scenario, uh, either. Cause we could use that for something maybe different. So if, if that was possible to do that, uh, when we come to our budget meeting in, in July, that may be something that I guess the administration and our business manager can look into along with Taryn and, and.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, that's, that's basically the bottom line is trying to come up with a fine, financially reasonable solution for both entities. But then also the priority is making sure that the kids are getting the services that they all need.
So you can, you can give us, I'll get to you, Tina. So you can give us a dollar an hour amount?
Yep. So kind of the, how we've been running this contract is we've been charging, I believe $60 an hour. I think it's $60 an hour is what we normally will send a bill to. But then on our end, we've been trying at the hospital, trying to keep it under that $41,000 budget. So we've kind of been trying to do the math.
Sure.
Math is, you know, difficult at times, but we do charge, you know, $60 a rate. But then we've been trying to budget that out between the school year to fit into that $41,000 budget. So we haven't really allowed us the time to pay ourselves, the time that we work at the hospital doing our write-ups for evaluations and our setup and all that other tedious stuff that goes on with school related tasks. So that could be a solution.
Tina? I was going to ask Brandy something, but I'll ask you first.
Um, so doesn't it work like we have, we have this contract and we bill it out. So we pay them monthly, whatever they bill us for. And then up to us, I mean, I'm assuming that it works out that it's just up to a certain amount of money. No. So in those years that we were over, did we pay that also then? So it's not necessarily that they're not getting paid for what they've been billed for or what they've billed us. It's just that we need to increase that amount to reflect the, the work that's being done. Is that what I'm getting?
Yeah. I mean, that's like Nikki said, I think a lot of the, the additional kind of closed doors work that.
For sure.
And those services haven't, haven't really accounted for it.
Yeah.
And then obviously from the hospitals end, that's, that's not a good deal when they're doing school related work.
Absolutely.
At the facility and not able to do revenue generating tasks at the hospital.
Yeah.
Taryn?
Okay. So on that sheet, Taylor put that sheet together, um, cause we met with these guys last week to talk about this and talk this through. And so it shows the past few years of what that contract has been and what has been expended. Um, there were several years where they paid $1,000 higher and we did not expend a $40, $41,000. Um, right now we have less students receiving OT services and, and the prices increase a lot. Um, so our contract for this last school year was $41,000 and the bills had come in and we're not, we're not, not going to pay them for the services they're providing them. So we're covering those bills. Um, that's just another piece of the puzzle. So they're not, not getting paid for paying the bill.
Yeah, I assume.
Um, on the other end, the invoices that we're getting, say, um, they're pretty detailed on the OT side of, you know, we saw seven kids today. And then we attended an IEP meeting and then we worked on notes for seven kids or however many. So on our end, when the invoices come through, it looks like we're getting charged for those notes. It's documented on those invoices. And I absolutely want to pay for, um, you know, whatever time they're spending on our kids. But then, I mean, we also, we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. I mean, we have to be really physically responsible. So there's a fine balance there between student need and being financially responsible with these dollars.
Okay.
Could I kind of tag along?
Sure.
Really? If that's okay. Um, so the first two years on that sheet that Karen gave, we got up, I can't remember. It's that information that she was just explaining, but the first two years I personally was not here. So that 19 and 20 and 20, 21 year. Um, so this is just going off of what I have gotten told from our previous OT. Is that yes, the caseloads have been hired, but also we have to think about that. A certified OT or OT assistant were only doing services those two days. Whereas the school district hired someone, a para to come in and, you know, they got the proper training from the certified OT and all of that to do these services. But they then completed two and a half additional days of OT services. So I personally feel like that money should have got portrayed into our budget a little ish. Like we have to take that into account that the school paid this person to come in and do OT services for those two full days and then a half a day on Friday. So I feel like that's kind of why we haven't exceeded that budget and had so much left over. Because we physically, the OT at the hospital or assistant were not physically giving those services. Whereas the third year was the first year I started. Um, and we kind of advocated for a certified OT or assistant to come in and do these services. Just because, you know, we have the education and we have the knowledge to give to the extras teachers and paras that have questions, whereas it's not, I have to go ask the para because I'm not here. And then they have to try to relay that specific question back to us. And then we have to formulate an answer and get it to the para and then they have to get it back. It's kind of just took out all of that. And we were able to get in the classrooms more with the kiddos and just that least restrictive environment. And so in that third year, we were there three days out of the four. So we did pick up an extra day. And so we did kind of exceed that budget a little bit last year. And then this year we didn't have that para, so she left. So we didn't have a really specific OT para that has been trained in the past. So we picked up all four days of services. So then that's kind of why that increase shows to me is how I'm reading it. Is that the first two years, we weren't doing all of the services. They, the school was hiring someone else to come in. And then we kind of gradually overtook all of it. So now this year or this past year, that number kind of represents what actually specific OT or an OT assistant did for the school. If that kind of helps.
So basically it's a, it's basically is to sit down and, and discuss with Angie and, and Karen and, and Brad. Uh, and you guys on the, on the contract and how it comes up. And that way Angie can present the budget to us at the next meeting. That, is that correct? Is that what needs to be done? Okay. Well, I know, yes, Jason.
How many pairs do we have in that capacity?
So the first two years are for sure, the first year on that page, I was not the sped director. When I was hired as a sped teacher, there was, we contracted an OT and we always had an OT para, that's how it had been. Um, that OT para was nothing more than a special education para who did provide some services on those days, but also did other things throughout the building as the other sped pairs did. Um, so it's not like a, it was five days a week. We did try to get away from that because, I mean, that is a, it's a great point. And we talked about that a lot is we want the expert, we want the expert with the kids, we get that. But there are other pieces to the puzzle of, I mean, least restrictive environment and providing services that are in compliance and right by the child too.
So that goes to my second question. If we increased, we'll just say five days a week. Is that, are we going to cut pairs now because of that increase? We're going to lose on that end then, or okay?
Dana?
There are very little, you know, budget that we have only gained to percent. And for school year and, um, I think given the hours and needs, I would be more than willing to look at the, of the $53,000.
I think we'll leave that up to the superintendent to bring us a recommendation, I think at that point. After the discussions with the, the hospital, Western County's health services, excuse me. And, and everybody involved in that, but that's okay. And then they can bring it to us. Yes, Tina?
And does this, this all comes out of sped, right? But aren't they working with special education kids?
Yeah, it doesn't come out of the grant. It comes out of the general fund.
But it's reimbursable, correct? Correct? Okay. Okay. Well, I know Brad's in Mexico right now, so. When he gets back to get with you guys and, and all involved and sit down and hopefully come up with a, a solution that works for everybody. Yes.
I just want to say thank you for bringing us something that was really easy to understand and thorough and that is appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening. We have a lot of meeting left, so you guys are more than welcome to stay for all of it.
It's pretty riveting. Look at them get up and.
Yeah, they're gone.
You really want to be talking to Tina.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Are there other visitors' comments? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, bid recommendation for the outdoor classroom. Brandy, do you have any?
Um, yes, I would recommend that the board approve the bid proposal from Wildland Services for an outdoor classroom in the amount of $103,277.35. And this project is part of that S R grant, so.
Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid recommendation from Wildland Services for the outdoor classroom in the amount of $103,277.35 from the S R three grant fund. Is there any discussion?
Where is this, uh, where is this going? Where in the middle?
Yeah. Middle school, high school.
Do you have any recommendations coming up anytime soon? So yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to know where it was.
In the middle of football field.
Jason?
I seen on, one of the proposals, it said something about privacy screening fence and not on the other one. Or is there a privacy fence of some sort?
Yes.
Yeah. And so to clarify, actually what, upon further investigation, they thought instead of doing in the island of the bus loop, it's actually easier to pull power and do concrete and everything else. To the south of the sidewalk coming from the bus loop into the commons. So right now, if you come visit us, especially during the winter months, that's where like you get all the snow build up and the melt-in next to the building. If you look at the commons windows headed towards the refinery, headed towards Stampede. The privacy fence is included in both, both estimates, but that's a more, I wouldn't say privacy fence, but it's a protective fence for the chiller unit and some HVAC equipment that's out there that, that connects to the kitchen. So they wanted to protect that area that's a little exposed right now. And then essentially all of that grass between the sidewalk and the building would become concrete pad to then put the, the shelter over top and then do the seating and the electric and everything. But it's a little closer to the building, still outside. Easier to pull power is what they say.
Okay. Any other discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The 2023, 2024 extra duty list. Brandy?
I would recommend to the board to approve the 2023, 2024. Or extra duty list.
Motion.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2023, 2024 extra duty list. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Revisions to policies and I'm not going to read them all.
All right, I would recommend approving the policies for the salary schedules.
And these are basically just an update from what we did for salary, salary increases and stuff.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions of policies as stated in our agenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Okay, I have a question. Did you guys discuss extra duty pay when I was absent?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so was there a reason why it's only for extra duties that getting an increase and no one else?
Everybody got.
Everybody did. Not for the extra. I'm sorry, no, equity duty, the way I read.
It was for coaches.
It's of, we're excluding student council, FBLA, FSA. Grant management, all those things, nothing is getting an increase for extra duties except for, and I'm a little distressed about that. I don't think that's better. If we have enough money to increase for, I think then we could do an increase for everyone else. And I think that's sending a message that we only have one important activity and that's school. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think on one part of it, it's just bringing the coaches up to what, I can't remember who.
to what, I can't remember who it was, but some of them are already at fifty-nine or fifty-six. I'm looking.
Fifty-nine fifty.
Fifty-nine fifty.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I'm getting there. Baby. Sorry. I'm getting close.
Fifty-seven. Fifty-seven.
I just passed it. Because like the speech is already at fifty-nine five.
That's the only one though, right?
Yeah.
That was, that was a recommendation that we accepted at the time. For whatever reason, that was, that was what we
And your rationale though.
I didn't have a rationale, that was, that was Brad, actually, that had the rationale. I can't, I don't know if there was a a reason why everybody wasn't, extra duty wasn't raised, I don't know. I can't answer that question. But that was what was accepted during that budget process time.
Does the leadership team know?
I can speak to part of it, but I think these guys probably can more. I know part of our discussion was the coaches do a lot of summer things where some of those other things like student council, they're primarily just in that school year, but the coaches are doing open gyms and camps and that sort of thing, so. But they'll speak.
That answer your question? Go ahead, Sean.
Also, too, on that, they brought to us the coaches that were getting paid at two A schools and all the other ones, and from what I understood, our coaches hadn't had a raise in ten to fifteen years, is what I was understood. So we brought our coaches, which we are a three A school, and we have two A schools getting paid way more than our coaches. So I felt, I mean, and, and everybody felt that we should raise our coaches up to at least match everybody else's wages. I mean, that's kind of where we started out.
And Mr. Chairman, I have absolutely no problem with giving our coaches more money. But I mean, there are lots of these, I mean, FBLA, a bunch of those past summer things that they do with kids too, teach. And I realize teachers is the one that is the same, but I judge, I, it's distasteful to me to raise one group that's doing a lot of good work and not, not the rest. And I think you have the money for it, so.
Well, I guess the motion is to approve these policy changes, so if
And that's the only one I have a question on, so if we could show that one out separately, then I'd be able to vote for the rest. Or no vote for all, which is not my intent. So I would request to pull out.
Who, who made the motion?
I did. And that's fine with me.
You want to pull out the extra duty contract? No, out of your motion.
That's fine.
Who's second?
I'll agree with that.
Okay, so the extra duty contract will be pulled out, the rest of them will vote on right now. So, any other discussion on the rest of them? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll go to the extra duty contracts. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
They're second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extra duty contracts as scheduled under policy G C M T E, was that right, one? Okay, now we can have the discussion on that. Yes, Billy?
Um, I kind of agree with what Dano was, or Dano was saying. We need to look at some of the other ones, and I guess I didn't realize when we were doing that, I thought it was for the other ones too. I guess the only question I have is I see where was it, FCC LA and FBLA? But Future Farmers, FFA, they got a forty-nine fifty and then they've got a forty-seven fifty for their summer ag experience. So is that the same person getting
Yep.
Yeah.
That, so, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, I agree with some of the other stuff, but to me, that looks like we're rewarding Ms. Pischke for what she does in the summer. Um, but yeah, I mean, is that something when Brad gets back that we can discuss?
Any other discussion? Anything from? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion carried. But I, I do think that we need to have that discussion down the road. And, and
I appreciate that.
Well, we wouldn't do it this year because our budget's next time. I mean, but it's something that I will pass along to, it's, it's pretty tough to change that now. But I will pass it on that we need to talk about when we do extra duty contracts, that we do that in the future. And you guys are more than welcome to talk to him too, please do. Revision to policy, G C C A C A slash G D C B. Brandy?
I would recommend I would recommend the board to approve the revisions to policy, G C C A C A G D C B. I'm just changing from personal leave to include all leave to clarify that a little bit.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation to the revisions of that policy. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Classified recommendation. Brandy?
I would recommend to the board to approve Lowling Carter as a middle school special education para professional.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Lowling Carter as a middle school special education para professional. Any discussion? Yes, Sean?
Come on, okay. I'd just like to get a little information about this lady because it seems like the board votes on a lot of people that we don't know. So I would really like somebody to give me some clarification on it before I start voting, so.
We cannot do that in open session. Right, because it's personnel.
Perfect.
So we would have to go into executive session for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes? Yes.
Um Sean, there is a possibility that we could have a board committee who is invited to sit in on all interviews, if we're willing to do that, but um, because we have done that before. But other than that, we have the team who does it, so I'm, I'm not sure if it's qualifications you're looking for or what.
I guess. Excuse, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is we're up here voting for people with it, we don't even know. We get stuff presented to us that, that we just, it seems like it gets pushed through sometimes, that's how I feel. I mean, to hire somebody, I like to see them face to face. And I'd like to ask questions too, and I'm not saying our committee can't do it, and, and they're doing a good job. But how are we up here nine people to vote on somebody, we're supposed to trust everybody out there in the committee, is that what you guys are telling me? Yeah.
Oh, I'll answer that question. This board, and this is just board education here, is responsible for one person. And that is the superintendent. And that is the person that we're responsible for hiring and firing. And if we don't trust what he does or she does, we find a new one, and it's that simple. And we let our superintendent and our administrators set up their team in their school district how they feel best. And sometimes it doesn't work, I understand that. But most of the time it does. I think they know that we expect stars in our, in our school district, we expect million dollar employees in our school district. And, and if that's not provided to us as a board, then we, we should make a change at the leadership top. The other thing is, we're small enough school district that we get to see these applications. And a lot of bigger school districts, they don't even see them. They're not there, they're not presented to us, to the board at all, they're just hired. Now, I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just saying that's the way school districts and school boards work, we're responsible for the superintendent. That is who we're responsible for, and if the superintendent isn't doing their job as we see fit, then we find a new one. And that, that's what, what's that about? As far as the board hiring and, and interviewing people, I, I think sometimes the board members are asked to set on interview committees, and they do. Sometimes we're not, and, and if we can't trust the people that work for us directly, we better make a change, and I, I guess that's where that comes from, Sean, and I'm and, and I, I do trust the people, the people that work for us. If I didn't, I'd be recommending a change, and, and that's why you know, we are approving people to be hired, yes, but really we're not. We don't have to do that, that could go in and, and go on without us, it really could as a board. We don't need to micromanage that. And that's what that would be. But if you want to be on interview committees, I'm sure you can talk to the principals or, or Brad or whoever's interviewing them and, and, and you can get in on that interview committee. And we used to receive papers. And I was looking for it in here and I didn't see it, that gave us some who was interviewed and when they were interviewed and how many it's in there, I didn't see it anyway, and, and so that should, that gives you a little bit of background information too. Sean, it may not be perfect, but it's there.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay?
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve Lowling Carter as a middle school special ed para professional. Is there any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Permission to go out for bids for playground equipment?
I would recommend to the board to approve going out to bid for playground equipment. Uh, this would be for the elementary school that was written into the S R grant application.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go out for bids on the playground equipment. Funds being by, is, is that S R three or is that just S R?
Okay.
S R three?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Twenty-three, twenty-four Athletics and Activities Handbook. Is there?
I would recommend to the board to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Athletics and Activities Handbook.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
They're second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Athletics and Activities Handbook. And all the changes were highlighted within the handbook, is there any discussion? Yes, Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, on page three, how people control stuff and kids related actions.
The section at the end, upon return to athletics and activities following the expulsion, I think that means a clarification to say the completion of the expulsion period or something is because the official expulsion is, is the date at the beginning, correct? I, I would just clarify that a, a little bit. The parents, student, I'm sorry, the students, parents, guardians must accompany the student on overnight school trips and bear the cost of the lodging in the same accommodation as the team for all events remaining in that school calendar year. I don't like that, that's just where I am with that, I think activities and athletics are a privilege, not a right. And so I think when you play stupid games, you win bad prizes, and that's one of them. I also think we need to send a message that, I mean, students know they shouldn't be doing that. And I think they need to see the hard consequences. My other issue is that I don't think, I think it's a very unintended consequence when I make that really clear, I don't think there was any intent behind this. But this favors kids whose parents have a lot of money and free time. Or kids, kids whose parents are working two jobs are not going to be able to have that happen for them. And my other concern is putting a non-background checked adult in a hotel and traveling with teams. And there's, there's no reference to making sure that we have, if we're putting an adult in with kids, that they're safe. So those are my big three issues, thank you.
Jason?
It's not one of the highlights, but it's, it's under the tobacco and alcohol. Um, it's in red and it's crossed out where it's, um, uh, the student suspended. Or we had two, now it's one. So we, we all agree on this board that vaping and all that is, is out of control, and yet we have, instead of going from a two-day punishment, we're taking it, or a two-day contest, we're dropping it down to a one-day contest now. So I, I, I have some issues with that, that's basically saying, hey, you know, your punishment isn't for that.
That's for the first offense.
Right. But we have two, we crossed the two out and we went to one, so we lessen the punishment for an issue we're saying is, is out of control in our school with the vaping and all that. But now our policy is saying, well, we're, we're going from two to one now. So instead of punishing you more, we're, we're going to punish you less. I don't, I don't agree with that.
I if you want to leave it at two, leave it at two. I uh. I'm not sure where that change came from. Um, I know we looked at it as a group. I don't. Remember seeing that on there, or maybe Carrie or Tyler could speak to it. Going back to Dana's. Question about. Bearing the cost. Um, yeah, we do want it to sting. And so that's why we want the parents to have ownership in it, to have to foot the bill, to be there. They're staying with their child. So they're not. You know, they're not in the rooms with other kids, you know, for the from the background check. They're in the in their room with the child. They're gonna. Pay for them and their. Child to stay in the same hotel that the rest of the team is staying in, but they're not. Like they're not going to be in a room with. You know, anyone's kid in here or anything like that. Is it not clear on that? How is it read?
No, and and I do not think you would be putting them in the same room. No. I've I've been on school trip. Kids don't always stay in their room, you know, and and I'm. I. I think then they're saying they won't be riding on the bus because that's not really fair either.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so they won't be on the bus. Well, that's that's not really true, but. I I still think um. Kids whose parents have more money and time. Their kids are going to have an unfair advantage over kids who are in poverty.
I mean, that's the recommendation we've given, and so it's up to you guys if you want to adjust it.
That's that's the wording. In our expulsions. That's what.
I thought we took that out of one.
I don't remember, but I don't I don't think so. I thought we signed them all three that way.
I thought we took that one out.
I believe all three were signed that way as well.
Yeah, they were. I'm sure they were. Well, that fourth one doesn't count though. Because that was, I can't go there. How was this? Okay. Dana?
Um, I guess one thing I would say is that this is the second offense. So if if they're coming, they're coming back after. So a second offense for student use of controlled substances will result in being suspended from all activities and blah blah.
I think you're on the backup.
Where am I? Am I in the wrong place?
Controlled substances in one and down.
The second offense.
So so the second offense, it says.
First backup.
Oh, we're okay.
Yeah.
But you can't.
Say that then we're not asking them to do that for tobacco. We're not asking parents to accompany their child. After tobacco. Penalty. So I I guess I thought you were talking about the controlled substances penalty. Oh, okay. Right? Okay.
But then you had asked a question about tobacco, so I was trying to answer both questions. That's why I jumped.
The post expulsion one.
Okay, so. And I mean, I can understand what you're saying about. That it's it it's somewhat of a penalty for the parents as well, but. But I would say. This is also after the second offense, so. Isn't it? It says right here.
After expulsion. Offense the remainder of their high school career, they're done if they have a second offense.
After they're expelled and.
Their first.
Upon return to athletics and activities following the expulsion.
The first expulsion.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes, that's the intent if it needs to, you know, reform out of that.
Does it need to be reformatted?
Like those sentence, a second defense for student use of controlled substance result. Either that or this. Et cetera. If we take that, move that.
To the bottom.
To the bottom, move upon.
Perfect.
Um, first depends. Yeah.
That makes more sense. I think that would make more sense.
Yes.
That makes more sense in terms of like. What you're.
Yeah. Well, as much as we've been dealing.
Why are they there twice?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Could we do that? And and we'll just table this until the next meeting, and then we get the revision of it? Okay, will that work? Dana?
So you.
Jason?
Yes, yeah.
Everybody over here? Okay. If we can, if we can just do that and 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 whoever writes them up and we can we can approve it at the next meeting, that's that's to give still give you plenty of time to. Get it to the athletes. Yes.
Are there other things? I'm just writing down like. We're going to go back to the two contests.
We'll rego it. It's not two con- what I my brain's moving over here. It's not two contests. It's it's one week of contests. And so, for example. In football, typically have one week of contests. In. You know. Soccer, you could have three contests in a week. And so it's one just one week of contests.
Okay, we're neat. Okay.
That's what I think is missing. Is that correct?
Yeah. It was changed to say four one content.
So it could be the pleasure of the board. I mean, if you guys want it to be two weeks, I. Sorry, to clarify, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
But just the process was kind of. Throughout the spring, and so there's coaches input, there's parent input, there's, all right, let's get together with Alicia and Carrie and Bryce and I. All right, did we get everything that we needed? But so something could definitely have gotten messed up. And so tell us what you want, and we can revise it as far as that stuff's concerned.
Jason?
I I guess for me, I I think. Yeah, we need to clarify the contest versus weeks or whatever. And then also on top of that, I mean, whatever we do, I would like to even see that increased more because, like I said. We we've said here and we have said, this is this is becoming an epidemic in our school. And I think our consequences need to reflect. That we're we're taking this serious and and we're we're not going to pussyfoot around with with a measly one day or one event where we're 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 gonna. These kids need to take responsibility and and ownership of of being an athlete and. And abiding by the codes and all of that. And I think our our punishment needs to reflect that.
What's your recommendation, Jason?
Well, like I said, I think. Clarify. Clarify the contest versus weeks. Because like they were saying, you you may have one football game, but you may have three soccer matches. So you got one athlete that's being suspended for three games versus a football player that's only being suspended for a one game. So I don't know if weeks versus contest makes a difference in how how we kind of. Make that fair across the board if we can. I I I don't know.
I think weeks is easier to.
So then I guess my recommendation would be change that to some form of weeks, week, and then.
How long do you want?
I I would be okay with, I mean. Because originally we'd be it'd be a a one week. Kind of thing. I'd at least go a couple weeks myself, but. Again, I'm just one guy here, so.
Why don't you guys talk it over? And bring us a recommendation. If we don't like it, we'll change it. How's that? Anything else in this? Better get a motion to table this until the next meeting?
So move.
So.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to the Newcastle or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four middle school. Student handbook. Randy?
I would recommend to the board to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four middle school student handbook with the changes as highlighted.
Better motion? To approve?
So move.
Second?
All second?
And moving. To approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four middle schools handbook? Is there any discussion?
I'm trying to, I was just looking, I'm trying to find this spot, so. Let me.
Jason, go ahead.
I'm kind of. Same thing looking for the spot, but I guess the gist of it is, um, I think it's in the middle school and high school. Um, under the. Tobacco policy. Under the. Students that are eighteen years of age that can legally have the. Well, however, it was written in there. We we have it to where the policy says no tobacco on campus. But then there's a portion of it that says they can have it in their vehicle on campus in their vehicle. So.
In the. One that's in the handbook?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what I I need to find it, but it, yeah, there was somehow it was that.
I didn't realize that was in the handbooks.
Uh, yeah.
That's just, it's intended to just be copied from board policy. Board policy in there. We use it so much, we just put it in there.
Then we probably need to change that board policy too.
It's the attorney.
Okay.
Take that paragraph.
Okay. Did we take it out of the handbook, you know?
Although. Because that's not a highlighted change because.
Right, it was not a highlighted change, so I was just reading that and it and it. It just, to me, it was like, well, we're saying this, but this portion of it's saying the opposite of what that's saying. So we could. Either we were allowing it. On campus but in their vehicles, or we're a campus.
See it.
Tobacco.
See it.
So it'd be one of each one of these that no tobacco products.
Um.
Let me just to clarify that for both of us, I mean.
So it says.
We want to change to.
It says the handbook, the district recognizes that adult students eighteen years or older may illegally possess and use tobacco products such as adult students may access tobacco products and that privately it was upon school grounds, but name. Not possess tobacco products elsewhere upon school grounds. It's paragraph three. Policy J I C H.
Yep. We need to.
That's what all the referencing like three or four meetings ago.
Yep. So we probably need to take that out.
Whenever that policy is updated, the handbook will follow suit.
Okay. So that.
Tobacco twenty-one.
Yeah.
That's why.
So that's why that needs to be taken out of there. Correct? Anything else?
That's what I had in mind.
So should we table that one?
No, let's just, we'll just, we'll just say that it's taken out for right now. We can take it out of there. And then if our policy changes, we can, we don't have to worry about it. Is that okay with the? Motion and a second? Okay.
So the, so it's going.
That third paragraph will be taken out.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
All.
That's what I was looking for.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four high school student handbook. Randy?
I would recommend to the board to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four high school student handbook that changes are highlighted.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving seconded to approve the. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four high school student handbook. With the changes highlighted. And does that have that same paragraph in it? So we need to take that paragraph out?
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I guess administrators report. Anybody want to give a report? Bo, we're going to start with you.
Okay, I got quite a bit.
Oh, maybe we shouldn't start with you there.
I haven't practiced in a while, which was good. I'm glad you guys got to meet my staff. I I got a really good group with Marin and Mike, so I'm glad you got to meet them, so. Um, first off, turn this down. Um, we are going to start our server project July seventh. Um, we're looking about doing that on a Friday, shutting it down Friday night, and everything will update over the weekend. So. When we come back, everything should be good. Um. The only thing that we got to worry about is Radius, and we'll check that on Sunday. That's how computers connect back up to our network. So that's what Radius is. Um, right now, I'm super busy with 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 my crew. Um. Imogen's going really good. All computers are in. Um, everything we've ordered is in. Um, we got brand new cards for the middle school for charging. Uh, middle school is done, and they are about three quarters of the way done with high school. So Imogen is going really good. Um. As you've noticed, I took the 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 new sound system out of here. Um, when I was getting that ready to, um. Help Newsletter Journal post that to YouTube. I was really unhappy with the sound of it. Um, so I've talked to, um, Black Hills Integration, and we are, he will be here Tuesday. And we're going to make that better. So I was I was unhappy with it, and he's going to come down and make it right, so. Um, hopefully by the next one, we'll have it. So it's a good system. It just, I, right now, not all the speakers are are pushing out. I think you did your last meeting with two speakers working. And that's today. I come in and mess with it quite a bit and never could get it. So that's why we're we're back to the old system. So, um, hopefully the next time we're good to go. Um, also, when they're down here, we will put the PTZs in the auditorium. Um, it'll be a two camera system, so we can switch between two different angles, um, when we live stream. So when we live stream concerts and, um, graduations and whatnot, we'll be able to switch between different angles. It's just kind of something fun that I like to. That that the AV group can kind of get into and learn some video along with the sound, so. So that will go into, um, I'm still waiting to hear, uh, when they are coming to finish the the doors. In the gyms and the pool, and we're adding a couple more cameras. Um, everything's signed. I'm just waiting for them. Uh, the group they subcontract comes out of Utah. So when he gets me, his calendar, we'll get something figured out, but it'll be done. I'm I'm betting by next next, uh, next month. So what that includes is it'd be the card readers for all the gyms and the pools. So if we do go into lockdown. They can still badge in. With that. So that was something we overlooked when we were doing the original project. They could get in the fire doors, the classroom, but we never thought about gyms and pools, which. Really could be something they're going to have to get into. So that that's part of that project. Um, and then, um, the other thing we were looking at, we did get our quotes back on the boosters for the, um, elementary. Both radio and cell phone. Um, I'm just waiting for, uh, Dad to get back from fishing in Mexico. And we will sit down and knock that out. So, um, truly looks like I think we'll be able to knock both out with security money. Um, that the state has given us. If not, it'll be within probably ten thousand dollars to get both those projects done. And that also includes the. The film on the glass. So I, we we, there's a good chance we'll get all three done, so. Um, but we need to get on that probably right when he gets back to make sure that happens before, um, school starts. Right now, equipment was about three weeks out. So I mean, we're looking at probably getting it in at the end of July, hopefully, fingers crossed, so. it in at the end of July, hopefully, fingers crossed, so, but that, um. Really, that was about it for project wise, um, do you want me to talk about the board docs now?
Sure.
Okay, um, so, um, this was something actually CeeLo and I looked at, um, what, probably three months ago, huh? Um, I, I think it's, I think it's a good product, the only thing is, I, it, it, maybe I'm reading it wrong, I don't see anything that it, that it offers that we're not doing right now. Um, as I go through it, we livestream, um, all our docs and board minutes are done by CeeLo, um, when there's updates, they're done by CeeLo, um, social media sharing, we're going out onto YouTube doing that, agendas are built on it, the only thing I think that I, that that's kind of nice about it is it does a meta-search, so if you are looking for, uh, policies and whatnot, you can type that policy in and it'll go right to it, we have it on our website, but I think that's a better way of looking at it. Um, truly, it, it, it's up to you guys, I thought, I mean, option four is everything I read, and that's sixteen thousand a year, which seemed pretty, pretty high for me, for stuff that we're doing for free right now, but, um, truly, I'll do whatever you guys want me to do. Um, and, and again, unless I'm reading and missing something, I think we cover a lot of what we do, and if we don't, I, I think we could definitely have a solution to figure out, to make it easier, if that makes sense. Um, I guess, do you guys have any questions on that? Um, I, I'm more than well, um, I said Jason looked at it, we can, I, I, we can share this whole packet with you if you want, but that's just my thoughts, just the initial looking at it and watching the videos and, and researching it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, Bo, it was, it was kind of from, I, I think the gentleman was Evan, I believe, um, that, um, this was through BOSI's, because that's what we're, we're going to, is the board docs, um, and basically, the way I'm understanding, it's a program where CeeLo just sends us this stuff in an email, this is an actual program where, um, all, uh, all this stuff is integrated into, um, and it communicates with all of us, instead of through email, it's through board docs, um, all of our executive sessions, all that stuff can be done within that system. It, right, is that, yeah, so, and I, I guess what we do in separate forms versus it all being done through, I, I would call it a single program, I guess, would that be fair to say, Bo?
Yeah, so the way, the way I understand it, it's, it's, it'll be a single. Sign on, so we will, um, we'll talk with them, we'll give them your school emails, you'll do a password, it'll be a site you go into, you log into, and it takes you into the agendas, it takes you into all of that, so it, it's a site you'd log into and look at as opposed to getting emails, essentially, um, I do like the recording and all that, but that was all stuff we kind of added in just because of COVID, really, so we, we actually ended up moving all that in, and, and, and invested money into, into doing that already.
Anna?
I will tell you about my experience with board docs, it worked great if everyone was using the exact same machine. Um, and because the state board did it, and everyone got a tablet just alike, and it worked pretty well then. The, the only thing I think that we could improve a lot on that would help me personally is the links for these eight and ten-digit alphanumeric policies, because you, you have to click the index to find it, then you have to go back and have remembered, which isn't always easy, what all those are, and then link it, if the links could be in the index with the title, that would, that would make life a lot easier, and I, I think, um, because everyone I've ever referred to policies has said it's, it's a little user-hostile, so that would help, but I think, I really think we're doing everything else pretty well.
Sure, Dan, what I'll do is I will talk to, um, our web provider and see if I can put in a, almost like a search at the top, where you could go in and just type that in, and it'll take you to, um, the policy. Um, I know originally it didn't have that, but that's been almost four years ago, so if not, it's definitely something I will put in there as a request that I'd like to see done, because I agree with, and that's even what I, that's what I saw, that's the one thing I really liked in there was to be able to search policies just by, by typing it in, and, and I agree with you, that was the first thing I, I saw too.
Is that all you had, Bo? Any questions? Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Bo. Angie, you wanna go?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Aaron?
I don't really either, Mr. Chair, uh, we started summer school this week for special education, so we have two days down, and then our high school students should be, well, they should be back, they went to Wyatt Tech today, so I'm excited to hear about that.
Tyler, did you have anything?
Nothing to report, if anybody wants to sit in on the next interview, just let me know.
Bryce?
No report here either, thank you.
Tracy, you wanna go now, or you wanna wait? Okay, Brandy?
I don't have anything from Brad, and really nothing for, for the elementary either, we started summer school this week, and then Aaron had mentioned that we have some staff members doing the MC training, it's a literacy training, um, and so our parking lot has been pretty busy here since school got out, and kudos to those teachers who are doing that, I heard it's pretty intensive, they've had homework and the whole bit, so, and that more enjoying summer, so.
Any questions for Brandy? Any board members have a report? Yes?
Um, we had a, a web meeting last Wednesday, um, and there's something exciting happening, but I can't tell you about it today, but it's gonna happen later this week, hopefully, and, um, I'm just really excited about a, a really wonderful new benefit that Web is gonna be able to offer at no additional cost to its members. We will meet again on August fourteenth.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Jason?
Really, the only thing I got, um, the BOSI's and Sheridan, um, we're typing up a proposal now, um, for a meeting this week, we're repurchasing a new building and relocating the school to a new building, um, as you, as I reported, well, what, a year ago, Glendo, there's, they had a new school, so, I mean, obviously, the need for BOSI's is increasing, unfortunately, and so, but other than that, that's just the only thing real, really new for BOSI's is the new building in Sheridan.
Okay. Any questions for Jason? Dana, did you have anything?
No, I haven't met some.
Okay. Any other board members? We'll move on to future agenda items, is there anything we want to discuss next time? I know that we have the budget, uh, approval, and also, we all have the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four athletics and activities handbook revision. Anything else for the next meeting? Yes, Jason?
John, I don't know if this would be for future agenda or discussion items, um, and briefly, um, you responded to my, I think, to the email, um, with, with the, the exit interviews, um, when we have, uh, board members that sit on it, with that information, how, with those exit interview information, how is that information being dispersed, or how, how is that getting passed around, or how should that be passed around, if it should be passed around to the board and things like that?
I can, I can respond to that, um. First of all, I, I hope that when you do an exit interview or on that committee, you share that information with Brad, and I've specifically asked Brad to, to look at all those and put something, some kind of report, some kind of information, and he'll bring that to the board. Uh, exactly when he's gonna do that, I, I don't know, Jason, I don't, I, I think the next couple of weeks, he's probably gonna be kind of out of touch doing that sort of thing, but, um, before the school year starts, I mean, he should be bringing that to us, so, but we need to share that information or some of that with, we need to share that with Brad, uh, if he's not sitting on there, um. That's kind of our duty as, as board members, that we, we need to be pulling that information to him, so that, as I said earlier, he's the guy that basically runs the administrative, the staff, and, and if we need to share that out there with them, and something that we're gonna change, or some kind of, whatever it may be, I don't know, and then he'll bring that back to us, and we'll have that discussion with him.
Okay, because like I said, I guess that's my question is, those that are involved, obviously with Brad, but do we need to get with the principals and say, hey, this is what was discussed, or do we just give it all to Brad, and then Brad goes to, you know what I'm saying?
I, I would give it to Brad, and, and that's the guy that, he's responsible for us, to us, and we're responsible to him, and then he can share it with the principals or whatever, the staff, or however he wants to go about that, and if you want to share it with this, I'm, I'm sure that if he talked to Brad and you want to share it with Bryce or Brandy or Tyler or whoever, uh, I'm sure he wouldn't, he wouldn't care about that.
So what we can expect at some point is to see the exit interviews and, and the, and what's the, the list of, the list of kudos, and then the list of things that we can improve on, and, and what we're gonna do about those, how we're gonna get more kudos and improve any issues.
I don't know if we'll see the whole exit interview, because some of them are quite lengthy, but we will see a synopsis of what is going on, and we will see what, what can be changed, what we can improve upon, or what was said, I think it'll be an upfront information for us, and if you want to see the whole interview, I'm sure if Brad has them, uh, stopping at the office, and he, I'm sure he'd share them with you.
Okay, I guess then I would request that we do all get to see them, I mean, we had a hundred and fifty-six page packet tonight, I had a, a hundred and thirty-one some last week, I don't think anyone's adverse to having a few extra pages to read.
I guess if you want to stop in and see, and, and look at the exit interviews, I would recommend that. Personally, I'm not gonna read every exit interview, I'm, I'm not gonna do that, I would rather take a, a synopsis of what we're gonna do in our school district, or what he plans on doing, and, and if we disagree with that, we can, we can have that discussion at that point in time. So. But I guess that's my opinion, I don't know. If you want to do it differently, we can do it differently, but. Okay. Anything else for future agenda items? I don't know exactly when that will get done, I'm, I'm assuming it will be, it might, well, it may be next, next meeting, as far as I know, but I don't know that. Anything else, any discussion items, I guess we have none? Dana?
Let me go back to something. Can I go back to something?
What?
Not, nothing that we're, we need to vote on or anything like that, but, um.
Okay, I guess.
Okay, thanks. Um, you know, Sean, you had said that you thought things were getting pushed through. Um, I'm just the tiniest bit offended by that, um, I guess, and I would assume some of you guys would be offended by that. We, we all get the information on Fridays, like in the board packet, so we know who the recommended person is, we know who else was, um, interviewed, we have the reasoning in writing why they picked the person that they did, um, and you always have the opportunity to call or come in and talk with Brad and ask him about more, I mean, so I guess I, I guess I'm not really sure why you feel like you don't, you know?
Okay, maybe I was a little out of hand, so here, let me tell you one thing, I, little school board member knew, so, um, it just seems like there's a lot of names, new names coming through, so didn't know who you go to, who interviews people, I would like to be on an interview committee, I really would.
For sure.
Just so I know who these people are that are coming in our school, so I'm not out there offending anybody in this room by saying, I don't think you guys are doing your job, my thing is, is I have a hard time voting on somebody that I don't see personally, that's, that's just me, I mean, the, the business that I am, I just don't hire anybody off the phone, I, I mean, that's where I am with you guys, I mean, I, I think you guys are doing an excellent job, you guys wouldn't be sitting out there, we wouldn't be sitting up here if we didn't think you guys did an excellent job, the stuff that we went through this year, I think you guys did an excellent job, so I did not mean to offend anybody by what I said, I just, it's just me, I, I'm sorry, I felt like it got pushed through, but there's a lot of new names coming through, but I'd really like to put a name to a face, that's just me, so.
Dana?
So, i- if you want to do that, I mean, that would really require you to be on every single committee, um, which I think you'll be shocked at how much time is spent doing that, um, and again, I think to reiterate what John said, is that we're a board who, um, like if you go back to our board governance, like our job is, is really what's going on with Brad, and what he's doing, and how he's managing everyone, um, and so, I know that I have been on many committees before, like, um, for different ones, but not everyone, um, so, and I guess for me, I, in order for this whole thing to work, we have to have some trust in the people that we're working with, um, and so that's why I think we get this information, so if there's something that you're concerned about specifically, that's when you call, but if you have the time to be on all the committees, I mean, I'm, I don't think there's anybody who's gonna stop you.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned. All the way down here. Yeah. Holy cow. You're just gonna go all the way down. Sorry, guys, give me a sec here. Trying to get to my, my agenda. Mine's always shorter than yours, John, so. Well, okay, I'll call the, order the meeting on the Weston County Rec Board. Um, approval of the agenda. I got a motion on the floor, properly seconded, to approve the agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye, those opposed, same sign? Motion's carried, uh, recognitions, do we have any recognitions?
Um, so I wasn't here for the bike tour, because I got to go see my daughter, um, but I wanted to give kudos to the swim team and Kathy Beeler and the cross country, because they. because they supplied food and such, and Kathy helped me with getting facilities opened and so did Bryce. So and it went really well. I talked to the director a couple of days ago and they want to come back in a few years and they're going to do the, the bike riders absolutely loved our facilities and loved it here. So it was a good thing. I want to promote the town better. Our chamber didn't really do much. I reached out to towns, but I think we could do even better. So
Do, do we have a number?
As far as how many, there was only supposed to be 250 riders and 30 support. It ended up being 350 people. Yeah. Yeah, it was really hard because we planned for 250 and Sean Smith, our our vice president of swimming, scrambled and got it done. Yeah. Yeah. I could, we couldn't have done it without her, so it was good. And it was a good fundraiser too. They're very giving. They ended up giving $1,000 more to the school district after they had given that 750 scholarship. And then they gave Kathy, I think, 350 for cross country. And they gave our swim team $300. So very generous, generous. Yep. Any questions? I kind of went out of order there.
No, no, you're good. You're good. Okay, any other recognitions? Okay, see none. Visitors' comments? Action item, consent agenda? I got a motion on the floor, properly seconded to approve consent agenda. Any further discussion? See none? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Old business. Do we finish up the ramp?
Yes, the ramp is in. We had to bolt one small piece to the ground. And we put it in and kept it in for a few days and blew it out. And I let the one gentleman know that was, so he was going to try to get rid of it.
Okay.
We had it in the water. I didn't want to keep it in the water.
Perfect. Thank you. New business? I don't think we, I have anything, Teresa. Nothing for your information, discussion items? I guess I have a couple of things and that kind of goes along with what Teresa was saying. And I guess that's bad on my part as the chairman to really know what our, what our, help me with the word I'm looking for. You know, yeah, kind of what our mission is, and and by that, I mean, I see the city rec board does a lot of stuff, helps put on, on camps and things like that. And I don't know. I ju, I guess I feel we need to be doing more versus having somebody come to us and say, hey, we would like some money. Okay, here you go. And then that's it. I I would like us to be more proactive, I guess, and maybe tie in with the city to put a little bit bigger camp on or have a little bit bigger name come in or, you know, help. I I don't know. I I guess I just, I don't know. You know, I mean, we really, for the years I've been on the board, we really haven't. I don't know if people just don't know about us or, you know, I, I, what, I just, your guys' thoughts on that? John?
I don't know if our budget's really, really large enough to do a lot of extra stuff. I mean, we have in the past, but I don't want
Well, and it's the rec, well, I don't know either totally, but I know, you know, for community-wise, the pool is a huge recreation. And so that's going to eat away a lot of your budget, just like my position, Kathy's position, and all that.
Angie, do you have that number? Okay. Okay. Well,
I mean, we do
We don't charge it, but, you know, as far as
Right.
I mean, we have you know, something that I would like to a recommendation of Sally Cooper did a ton of volunteer for auditoriums, which is the community. And she volunteers all the time. She, her and Laura, they're all into that and learn the sound of it. You know, and that is a reason.
And so to piggyback, I think Brad, I don't know if you're, I'm asking Brad is going to check into that. But maybe I, I put something more on your plate, Bo, is maybe can you do like a little blog on the the homepage or whatever, West County School District, number one, like, you know, this is what the rec board, you know, type thing to kind of promote, that's what we're doing for the community. I mean, just a little blog like that every once in a while. Maybe that way people, you know, don't think that we're not doing anything. You know, like when she opens up the gym for the volleyball and the basketball, just, you know, put something like that. Waiter, swimming pool, swimming lessons come out. I mean, that may make people can understand what we are doing.
Right. We're not monetarily maybe doing
Yeah.
But we're allowing
Oh, I guess I didn't, I haven't looked at it that way either.
Advertise, let them know what we are doing for the community.
Other than that, anybody else have anything? See none? I will entertain. I keep forgetting that.